Uh, meeting at a Hammond Council for April thirteenth, twenty twenty. Um, we can start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic. With one nation, indivisible.
Um, I'll just take a moment of silence. Uh, Carmen Rollcall.
Alexander.
Present.
Spitali.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Kelwinski. Torres. Tyler.
He's here, but he's muted, I think.
Sorry, Tyler's here.
Emerson.
Who?
Emerson. Rakos.
Yeah.
Warple.
Here. Let the record show, as of right now, electronically, six are present and three are absent. Right now, and the next item, before we get to the agenda, which we're reading in a minute, Mayor McDermott's here, and um, he would like to address the council on some different issues and what's been going on. So Mayor, do you want to take over?
Thanks, uh, Councilman Warple, excuse me. Uh, I want to congratulate the council and thank Hammond's IT department for making this happen. Um, Hammond's a hundred and thirty-five-year-old city, and I guarantee you, this is the first virtual meeting our city's ever had. So I know a lot of people worked real hard to get this done, so I want to congratulate uh, the IT department and the Hammond City Council. Uh, this is, I think it's pretty groundbreaking, and quite frankly, when this is all said and done, we'll probably have a lot more of this type of meeting, you know? Maybe if a certain councilman can't be there, they could zoom in, who knows what the future holds? But congratulations again. Um, I just wanted to make myself available to the council if you wanted to talk about finances. Um, obviously, about three, four weeks ago, I put in an executive order that froze the gaming budget. Um, since that time, we've, we've seen, of course, two casino get shut down. Uh, and with no hard reopening date at this moment, we also know that rightfully so, Governor Colcom delayed everybody's property tax payments for two months, which normally they pay in May, instead, they're going to pay in July, which is going to, you know, provide for fewer tax revenues than we were anticipating into the city. Um, so obviously, we have challenges, uh, making, maintaining staffing levels, and obviously, that, which is the most important part. Um, but more importantly, we didn't want to put ourselves in any hole. So we, we thought the best course of action, I want to thank the council for supporting me uh, with this, was to freeze the gaming revenues until we know what's going on. And that's had a big impact on the district councilman, and I want to recognize that and thank the district councilman for being patient during this time. Um, you know, normally, we're designing projects right now and starting construction projects right now, and obviously, that's not happening in twenty twenty unless the money's already been appropriated. So I, I want to tell the council, I recognize, you know, what you've allowed me to do, and I appreciate that, and I think it's in Hammond's best interest. Um, but, so we do have two challenges looming. Um, right now, we have about well over half of our workforce is working from home right now. Uh, other than fire, police, public works, they're pretty much all working as normal. Um, there's skeleton staffs in the sanitary district and the housing authority and the water department and the port authority. Um, we're all working from home as much as possible. Um, but, you know, anyway, I just, January and February for the, uh, for the Horseshoe Casino were normal months. They had actually good months in January and February, and then it just fell off. So until we know further what's going on, I think it's going to be tough for us to, when I say us, I mean myself also, to commit to anything, uh, as far as gaming expenditures, until we know, you know, what the situation is with property tax revenue, and until we know how much the horseshoe's making. We anticipated horseshoe making over thirty million dollars this year for us, which is what they normally do in an average year, and that is not going to happen this year. And as a result, we're going to have to adjust the way we normally do business, you know, because this is the new normal. So I haven't talked to horseshoe lately, but I would say I hope that they're up and running by July first. That's worst-case scenario, I would imagine, and even if they're up and running July first, I don't anticipate them making the type of revenue they made in January and February, just to be honest. So we have to assume the worst, and if things are better, then we'll react accordingly. But right now, I think the safest thing we can all do is assume the worst and make sure that we're covering our basics so that we don't have to furlough our employees or lay off our employees. But that's where I'm coming from, and I wanted to make sure I made myself available to the council today. So I thank President Warple for letting me speak, and I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Uh, Carmen, let the record show that I see Councilman Koenski, and I saw Councilman Emerson have joined us too, so it's now eight present and one absent. And, uh, does anybody have any questions for the mayor as far as the financing goes?
Or anything, I could talk about COVID, obviously.
I know that the tax draws have been, like, set back, and it's my understanding that the early tax draw we get will be for, like, if you have your money in escrow, that those tax draw, those tax, can you expand a little bit? Is there going to be three payments this year, um, as far as the escrow? And then all of a sudden, and I, I think it's what, August before the actual first tax draw comes, and how does that affect?
Well, we'll, we'll, it affects it dramatically, because we were anticipating ninety-four percent of Hammond property taxpayers paying their property taxes in May, as usual. You know, we're anticipating a normal year, and obviously, not only do Hoosier taxpayers not have to file in May, they don't have to file till July right now, which means the earliest we could draw money in the city Hammond would be August, and we're, our budget assumed, rightfully so, ninety-four percent payment, and quite frankly, we could be nowhere near that when we actually do get our money in August because of the looming recession and because a lot of people, you know, can't afford it right now. So the fact is, it's a perfect storm between the gaming boats are shut down. Uh, and quite frankly, even if they open up, who knows how much business they're going to do? Uh, property taxes are going to be delayed. So like a lot of companies in the, in the, in, in the United States, like a lot of households in the United States, we have to cope with the new normal, and this is the new normal. The new normal is our property tax draws are going to be delayed. The new normal is gaming revenue, it may not be coming in anywhere near where it's come in, you know, since I've been mayor sixteen years, so, and we have to adjust to that. If we don't, if we make mistakes that I've made as mayor in the past and spend money assuming that things are going to get normal, we could find ourselves upside down, and I can't do that as mayor. That's why I appreciate the council's support. When we asked to freeze the gaming revenue, I think it was smart when we did it, and I think until we know what the situation is, the financial situation really is, I think we should stick to this. And I'm holding myself to the same standards, council. I'm not spending gaming money and expecting you to freeze your spending. I'm not spending anything. We're, I think we all just hunker down and get through this and, and ensure that we can meet our payroll obligations and ensure that we can meet the basics that we need. And then when, when we get a better picture of where we're going, we start talking about, you know, start projects again. But did I answer your question, Dave?
Anybody else have any specific questions for the mayor?
Uh, mayor, question for you. Do we know how much PPE our first responders and our essential workers are still going out have? Um, if we have enough for them? And the other question, um, I'll ask, I'll ask it in a second, I'll remember what it was.
We, we could always use more, Councilwoman, and I appreciate you bringing that up. And we have been getting a lot of donations from unions and from businesses, and we've been asking people that want to donate their PPE to Hammond's first responders, police, fire, and garbage men, because these people are on the front lines right now, and I want to point that out, is garbage men are still picking up our garbage as though nothing happened, right? When we talk about police and fire, we, we talk about garbage men in the city Hammond also, because those, those men and women are on the front lines as well. But we could always use more, Councilwoman Alexander. So if anybody that's listening right now wants to donate PPE to Hammond's first responders, please either call up the city hall, you can call my office, you can call the council chamber, or we ask people to drop it off at the central firehouse, and, and they're, you know, they've been accepting it. So we have had numerous unions and numerous, uh, private, uh, you know, corporations donating so far, but we could always use more, Councilwoman.
Awesome, and then the other question is, do we have an update on, um, how many people may have been affected in the city of Hammond for, with COVID nineteen?
We had, I could tell you safely that there are over forty Hammond residents with COVID nineteen in the city. That's a safe estimation, that's what we know for sure. In reality, there could be hundreds more that are asymptomatic. The scary thing is, we've only done thirty thousand, thirty-six thousand tests in Indiana, and you look over at Illinois, they did seven thousand eight hundred tests in twenty-four hours, and we're averaging one-third of that in Indiana. So, um, forty is at an absolute minimum, but quite frankly, there's lots more, Councilwoman. And we just found out another employee came up today, uh, of Hammond firefighter, another positive. We had a Hammond police officer positive, and he's actually getting ready to return to work. We just found out today, we have a Hammond firefighter that was positive. Uh, we have a public works employee that's positive. I think that's all we have at this point, and hopefully, you know, get more.
All right, thank you for that update. I just want to make sure that, you know, the people are hearing that, um, so they can know why it's important to stay home and stay safe so that we can, um, continue to make sure that we're doing our part in our city.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Thank you, Councilman Warple. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and put it on mute and monitor the meeting. Thank you, guys.
Okay, um, before we get started too, I would, we do have a public hearing tonight, and I would ask the public that's watching if they want to have, uh, participate in the public hearing to go to Zoom us and punch in meeting ID number two nine one seven oh six nine one oh. And, uh, when we do have the public hearing, we will, um, address or call on anybody that wants to speak. We will also be taking any questions or comments by email electronically for seven days on the public hearing on the ordinance tonight of, of to appropriate monies from the twenty nineteen gaming fund into the twenty twenty gaming fund. Um, but there will be a public hearing, and again, if you'd like to join its meeting, two nine one seven oh six nine one oh. Uh, with that, um, item number three, the reading of the minutes. Councilman Spitali.
Councilwoman, go ahead.
Hey, Councilman Warple, could I make one thing clear? I apologize, I missed, it was the number sixty in Hammond, I apologize. Somebody on, on one of the commenters pointed out, I, I was going off the top of my head, it's sixty, I apologize. Sixty confirmed cases in Hammond.
Okay, um, we need a reading of the minutes. Councilman, you need, just Spitali, I can undertake a motion to accept the minutes.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we amend the minutes before we accept. Okay, well, I make a motion that we accept the minutes as they are written.
Motion's been made, Councilwoman Alexander, the second was made by.
Me.
Councilman Spitali, is there any discussion?
Yes, um, that we can amend the minutes from saying the presider being, um, Councilman Markovich to you being the presider, um, Councilman Warple.
Okay, the motion's been made to amend the minutes, is there a second?
Second.
Did you hear, Councilman Warple? Uh, I believe it was me and Councilman Emerson, okay.
Okay, um, do we need a roll call on this? Um, Carmen Rollcall on the amendment?
Mister President.
Uh, yes.
Yes, we do need to, we do need to place these minutes on file as well.
Yes, okay, so we need to amend the minutes first, and need a roll call on that, Carmen?
Yes.
Okay. Carmen Rollcall?
She's still muted.
Oh.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Kelwinski?
Yes.
Torres? Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes.
Warple?
Yes, let the record show, eight in favor, one, yeah, one absent. So the minutes as amended, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the ayes have it. Item number four, approval of claims.
Mister President.
Councilman Rakos.
The motion, we pay claims, beginning with claims dated three twenty of twenty, and ending with claims dated four eighth of twenty, claim sixteen sixty-eight. Uh, eight. Claim nineteen oh three inclusive, amounts of three million, six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, thousand, sixty dollars and eight cents.
Second.
The motion's been made by Councilman Rakos to accept the claims, seconded by Councilwoman Vines. Is there any discussion?
Okay, thanks.
Is there? Is there any discussion? Carmen Rollcall?
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Kelwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes. Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes.
Purple?
Yes, let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed. Item number five is public hearings, and I'm scanning through there. Does anybody here that wishes to speak during the public hearing, there be called on?
Mister President?
Who was that?
Chris Campbell, the IT department.
Hey, Chris.
Can you, uh, I would just like to clarify, it's zoom.us is the URL. And say that the meeting ID again is two nine one seven zero six nine one zero, zoom.us.
Should we give them a minute to see if anybody wants to log on there? This is, um, Carmen, can you read the ordinance by title?
Twenty oh seven, an ordinance to appropriate monies into the twenty twenty gaming fund.
Tyler, um, is there anybody that's part of the meeting that wishes to speak on this issue? Uh, I don't see any, so again, if anybody watching and has the chance to access Zoom and you wish to be heard on this issue, you can send an email to council@gohammond.com. And as long as it's received within seven days, it'll be added to the minutes of the next, uh, next meeting. Hey, uh, I guess the public hearing's closed. Um, item number six, communications. There, and does anybody have any communications? Does anybody have any communications? Alright, hearing none, I did receive a letter in, uh, mailbox from a Hess Elementary student that is addressed to myself, but it's to the entire council. Um, kind of a cute letter, it's from a third grader named Ashley Rojo, and she, obviously, this was when school was still in, because she wanted us to respond, and, um, had some questions for us, and I will make it available to everyone, so they can see it. The questions like, what's an ordinance, what does a councilman do with the money? What does it take to approve the money, and can you tell me what your department handles? So she says, she, I look forward to hearing from you and thank you respectfully, Ashley Rose. I don't know if you guys can see it, but it's here, so I will make it available to everybody in their box. Um, does anybody else have any communications? Communications are closed.
Mister President, um, I wanted to say one thing, we, uh, in the second district, I know Councilman Torres is on here today. On the way home, I heard about a sinkhole that was forming on Chicago Avenue, sort of right by Bishop Knoll, uh, just west of Bishop Knoll, right as soon as you come underneath the toll road. There was a contractor for the toll road that nicked one of our sanitary lines, and that sanitary line is taken, it's leaking, and it's taking in sand, which is causing, uh, a huge sinkhole on Chicago Avenue, which is probably going to result in at least a shutdown of three out of the four lanes, if not the entire street. So Councilman Torres, I know you're probably going to start getting asked some questions about that. I just wanted you to know, uh, I went out there today, and it's not a good situation at all, and it was not the fault of any city Hammond employee or any city Hammond contractor. It was the toll road contractor that did it, and I don't know how long it's going to be shut down for, but the sanitary district was assessing the damage today. So I just wanted Councilman Powitzki and Councilman Torres in the outlarges to know. I imagine Chicago Avenue will be seventy-five percent shut down, if not completely, so.
Um, has anybody got any questions on that? Hearing none, um, committee reports, does anybody have a committee report? Are there any committee reports? Um, I'll just say that I would like to enter, um, as a committee report for the finance committee, a statement the mayor made about the finances, is there anybody here as far as the council goes that's present now that didn't hear and would like him to repeat where we stand with the tax draws and stuff like that? Does anybody want to hear from the mayor again on that issue? Uh, Councilman Emerson or Councilman Torres, were you guys present when he gave his statement?
I was for the latter half.
Do you have any questions on, on where we're at as far as when we're going to receive the tax draws and the gaming money?
Well, I'd like a closing date, but I know that's probably not possible, because it's unpredictable.
Close, a closing date, I mean?
Well, just a, a date of, uh, a date when we might, uh, assume, uh, working on projects that are not already, uh, signed for, in other words, that the green sheet's been filled out or whatever.
Right, well, I think the first thing we need to do is figure out how much gaming revenue we're going to get this year. I'm going to assume January and February, we made five million dollars in those two months. After that, I think until through June, it's going to be very close to nothing. You know, let's say that by July first, the boat's up and running and they're doing well again, I think we can start to talk, you know, because then maybe they'll get eighty percent of where they were before, who knows? But, and right now, they're just shut, like, there's not a customer there. Um, so until, and not only that, we're not going to be drawing our property tax revenue until August, and what percentage of that draw are we going to actually get in August? If it's down at sixty percent or sixty-five percent, then we got to start to prioritize, you know? We've never suffered mass layoffs in the city Hammond, we've never furloughed our employees. I would hope that that streak continued, but these are discussions we're going to have to have eventually. But I know where I am, I'd, I'd rather just hunker down and get through this, and, you know, hopefully, twenty twenty-one will be a better year.
Did somebody have something to add?
Mister President.
Councilman Torres.
I have, uh, over five hundred thousand dollars of unspent money from last year. It should have been spent in twenty nineteen. Uh, that should be, uh, part of this new money of, uh, twenty twenty.
I understand what you're saying.
Okay, so, and I have some unfinished projects that I can put that on. So in fact, it's about five hundred fifty-four, uh, fifty, five hundred thousand fifty-four, whatever it is, I, I don't have figures in front of me right now, but better than a half a million dollars. I would like to be able to spend that this year, because I spent, uh, I spent money from last year.
That's, far as that's the, uh, referring to the ordinance we have in front of us, and, um, I think we all have remaining gaming funds, but I just want to be clear that I feel that, just, just my opinion, that my number one priority is for the city to meet, and then do what we got to do after that. Um, I don't know how that affects the money we're transferring over from what was left over in twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, but, um, does anybody have anything to add to that? As far as, is that?
Mister President.
Councilman Torres.
Second district and the third district, uh, have the most money to spend. Uh, you have, uh, around twenty thousand, again, so I don't, uh, have the figure, but anyway, it's a whole lot different amount than I had. If I had twenty thousand, and it's, uh, you and the sixth district have the least unspent money. If I had that amount, you know, I would be willing to sacrifice it too, but I have a lot of unspent projects, I mean, undone projects in my district that were not done. So I, I would like to salvage that money if I can, to use it for, uh, expendable projects.
Um, Councilman Torres, I appreciate the advice. I, I think that's a valid statement that you brought up, and we're not looking to go backwards, obviously. Um, we're looking, we're talking about twenty twenty money, and whether or not we're going to get the twenty twenty money, I think you have valid points, but at the same time, I mean, you know, I, I think we have to talk through these issues, but I understand what you're saying. And by the way, I have rollover money too, and from the mayor's office, we're not spending anything at all. I'm saving it for the budget, I'm saving it to make sure that we can make payroll. That's where I'm coming from. I understand where you're coming from, if you have rollover money, I get, I, I, I'm hearing you, I appreciate it.
Is there any other discussion on this? Does anybody else have anything to add on the committee reports?
Yes, Mister President.
Councilwoman Vines?
Uh, at this point in the meeting, I generally announce the upcoming community and crime watch meetings. Um, I would like to, uh, just reiterate that there are no crime watch meetings or community watch meetings, um, until, uh, things are resolved and we can open back up safely again. Uh, meanwhile, uh, we request that everyone still remain vigilant, uh, practice the social distancing, um, please wear masks when you go, uh, to the store if you have to, and gloves, and, and just be safe, just be safe. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Councilwoman Vines. I guess because of the uniqueness of this meeting, Mayor, could you address, um, how the city's handling the kids in the parks and people not adhering to the rules? I mean, we're not, I've heard everything from withdrawing people in jail, and that's just not true. Can you address that for a second?
We've had one citation issued, issued since this lockdown started. I believe that's a true statement, and it was highly profiled. It was a high profile when it was the church that was holding the service last weekend. That was the only citation I believe that we've issued for violating the governor's orders. Um, we don't want to issue citations, but we shouldn't even have these conversations. There are still kids going to the skateboard parks, there are still kids busting through the tape to skateboard, to, to go on the playgrounds, but we, we see kids, you know, on the basketball courts, and listen, I feel bad for the kids also, I feel bad for the parents that can't go to work, but until we flatten this curve, we have to, we have to play the game, and Hammond police are out there enforcing the governor's orders. The, the parks are closed, park buildings are closed, city hall is closed to outsiders. We're still working, but you, you can't even get into city hall, so that's the biggest problem we're having, Councilman Warple, is parental control over the kids.
Thank you. Does anybody have anything on the committee reports? Committee reports are. Committee reports are closed. Uh, ordinance third and final passage. Carmen?
Are we bringing out twenty oh seven?
Yes.
Twenty oh seven, an ordinance?
Mister Chairman? Can we pass this when the public hearing is allowed to respond for the next seven days?
Uh, I, I know our attorney, Berger's on, uh, Attorney Berger, did you hear the question? Bob, are you there?
He's there.
Yeah.
Bob?
Um, I'm not an attorney and I, 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 you must not hear us. I know we have, we've actually had a public hearing after ordinances are passed. What is the council's pleasure? Would you like to? This is the gaming money that Councilman Torres spoke of earlier and would you like to just bring it up next meeting or do you wanna? How you guys wanna handle it? Whatever the council's pleasure.
Uh, Mister Chairman, I'm not sure how we can go ahead with passing it today and then say that public hearing is, uh, that we really listen to people in the public hearing uh, and then negate anything they wanna say by passing it today if they wanna make a comment after today. So I say that my recommendation is that we wait. We, we can't spend it right now, anyway.
Is that fine with everybody else?
Mister President?
Yes. Councilman Torres?
Yes, I agree on the table that, um, here we hear, hear some from the public on this. So I, that was in the form of a motion. I would second it.
There's a motion at table and it's been seconded. Um, Carmen, roll call?
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Kelwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Raycos? Raycos? Warple?
Yes.
Yes, sorry.
Uh, the motion, the motion at table carries nine in favor, zero opposed. That takes care of ordinances, third and final reading, um, introduction of ordinances, there are none, resolutions, there are none. Moving on to item eleven, new and unfinished business.
Mister Chairman?
Councilman Coyski?
I listened earlier to comments by Councilman Torres and I agree to, I would like to be able to use my twenty nineteen money for the projects that were supposed to go last year. But in a bigger picture, you know, about thirteen years ago or so, myself, Dan Repay, Joanne Matanovich for when they were on the council, we had all tried to create an ordinance to pass pertaining to a rainy day fund using casino dollars to bank away for the future and couldn't get really any traction from the rest of the council or the administration to pass that at the time. But in retrospect and hindsight is twenty twenty, that rainy day fund sure would have come in handy right now. Thank you.
Hey, to, hey to burst your bubble, Councilman Mark, we have a rainy day fund.
How much is it?
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head, but a couple million dollars at least.
Yeah, I think we were looking for an ordinance that would create something like twenty million in ten years. Okay.
You should have floated that ordinance.
We did float it.
Is there anybody that has anything else on the new and unfinished business?
Mister President?
Who was that?
Mister President. Oh, Torres, Councilman Torres. Yeah, I just want for the record that I came on about six, uh, fourteen. I had trouble connecting.
Okay, um, under new and unfinished business, the council has board appointments to be made. I will entertain, claim a motion to reappoint um, Richard Spitali to the building contractors board. It's a two-year term that expires on April twenty-fifth. The electrical board is Ron Lubis, a two-year term expires on April twenty-fifth of this year. Jorge Batista is a one-year term that expires on April twenty-fifth of this year. And the H B A C contractors, Ron Kotso is up on April twenty-fifth of this year and that's a two-year term. So I will entertain a motion
Mister President?
To reappoint them either separately or as an entire group. Councilman Raycos?
I make the motion to appoint those listed, Richard Spitali, building contractors, Ronald Lubis for electrical, as well as Jorge Batista and the HVAC contractors, Ron Kotso. I make that.
Motion's been made by Councilman Raycos. Is there a second?
Second.
I think I heard Councilman Spitali first on that one. Is there any discussion?
Mister President?
Councilman Tyler?
Are we sure that all these individuals want to be reappointed?
Um, the, I, the only one I haven't, I have no idea of is Mister Batista. I know Mister Kotso and Mister Lubis and Mister Spitali wanna be reappointed. Has anybody heard from anybody on this? Councilman?
I have not, Mister President.
No, anybody else? Hey, is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? So since its appointments, uh, Carmen, roll call?
Alexander?
Uh, yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Kelwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Raycos?
Yes.
Warple?
Yes, let the record show nine in favor, zero opposed to the board of council board appointments. Is there any other new and unfinished business? Is there any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is closed. Um, I'm gonna ask the administrator, uh, Chris, do you, I don't see anybody here for public expression. Is, do you see any?
I do not.
Okay.
Hey, Councilman Warple? Mister President? We have, uh, six point three million dollars in a rainy day fund in the city. Uh, we use the rainy day fund to help us with our energy efficiency program. It was created in the budget last year. Actually, actually, it was created when we did the energy efficiency program.
And that number of six point three million, you said?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So we can actually tap into that for?
Tap into it. We created it so that we could tap into it to help with our lease payments.
So we couldn't use it for anything that we're gonna be short on because of circumstances like now?
Is there? I guess that was under new and unfinished business. Is there any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is closed. And I don't see anybody again, and I don't see anybody from the general public, um, that wishes or to speak on the public expression. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion's been made. Second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Uh,
thank you, everybody, for participating in this and we'll be, um, two weeks.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Be safe, everybody. Be safe.
Be safe.
Everybody be safe.